We'll call the meeting to order and ask for Brandon Ely, a senior from Nansman River, to come up and offer the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Do we have certification in the closed meeting?
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of October 12th, 2017 pursuant to section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
So move. Second. If Board members will please vote. Board member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board member Byram?
Yes.
Board member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dubrinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public speakers on agenda items will start with, before we start, we'll have the clerk read their.
Thank you. This is an opportunity during the school board's meeting for the public to provide comments related to items on the agenda. The school board will listen to your comments but will not respond to statements or questions at this time. The speaker's comments may not identify any specific person in a personal attack or in a derogatory manner. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes for their comments. I will provide you with a 30-second warning to allow you time to close your statements. Before beginning your comments, the speaker is to provide their name and home address. Under school board policy, individuals are not allowed to give all or part of their five minutes to other speakers. Thank you.
Start with Ed Young. Mr. Young?
I would say good evening to the school board, Chairman Dubrinsky. I'm coming from the school board for a request to look into a policy that I've been told that volunteer coaches that have been approved to work in our programs are not allowed to conduct a practice or weightlifting session or conditioning session. And I would like to have that maybe looked into because with only two paid coaches, it's hard for the coaches to be there all the time. It would kind of get burned out because practice is now allowed year-round by the Virginia High School League. And if you don't take advantage of that, you get lost in a shuffle. We have some good young coaches that I'd like to kind of get them more and more involved in the program. And when they're ready, put them in front of a team and let them run a team so that they get that experience and maybe become a paid coach as necessary down the line. Right now, the only way they can do that is a paid coach would have to be, I'm being told, has to be there with them. And especially in the summertime when your offseason programs, summer league, spring league, fall league, it really gets hard on the coaches to be there every single second. So I'm just hoping that maybe the school board can look into that policy and maybe allow the certified coaches that have been approved, volunteer, to be able to run a practice or a weightlifting session or conditioning session. That's basically the main reason I was here for this evening. Okay, thank you.
Now, please, Sturgis, you talk on homework policy.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Sturgeon and I live at 3105 Caroline Crescent in Suffolk, Virginia. I have a first, third, and fifth grader at Driver Elementary. I've been doing elementary homework with my kids for six years, so I am no stranger to the tears, frustration, and stress that comes with homework. I encourage my children to try to get As and Bs. I give incentives at home for doing extra academic work. We use the Reflex Math Program. My kids bring books into the car so they can read while I'm driving. Academic performance is important to me. Alfie Kohn wrote the book, The Homework Myth. In a 2013 article, he wrote, quote, "No research has ever found a benefit to assigning homework of any kind or in any amount in elementary school. If we're making 12-year-olds, much less 5-year-olds, do homework, it's either because we're misinformed about what the evidence says or because we think kids ought to have to do homework despite what the evidence says," end quote. So just to be clear, no research has ever found a benefit to assigning homework in elementary school. While homework is unnecessary, there are some situations where schoolwork can be sent home. For example, if the child had adequate time in class and they did not finish their work, it could be sent home. Optional work can be sent home if the child is falling behind in a specific area. All children can be encouraged to read every night but without the dreaded homework reading logs. When reviewing for benchmark tests, optional work could be sent home. And if the parent or child requested it, additional work could be sent home. But losing recess for not turning in homework or homework participation impacting a child's grade should be a thing of the past. I've printed out my son's schedule on Mondays and Wednesdays. He is on a soccer team and does not have time to do homework on those days. I've also made a list of our options as a family when our children don't have time to do homework. We can tell our child to not do the homework, which teaches the child to defy their teacher. Our child can stay a plate, which results in lost sleep. We can remove the child from extracurricular activities, but then the child misses out on that activity. I honestly couldn't think of any good options when my child doesn't have time to do homework. I don't want to teach my child to defy their teacher. I don't want to take my child off his soccer team. But as a parent, there isn't a good option. I'm stuck. Homework puts families in a bad situation without good results. In the book, The Case Against Homework, Sarah Bennett and Nancy Kalish write, quote, "There's almost no evidence that homework helps elementary school students achieve academic success. Yet the nightly burden is taking a serious toll on America's families. It robs children of the sleep, play, and exercise time they need for proper physical, emotional, and neurological development, and it is a hidden cause of the childhood obesity epidemic," end quote. Homework negatively impacts the entire family. We can't go for a bike ride as a family because our son has to do homework. My first grader is mad at me because I'm making her stop her imaginative play to do homework. She tells me that she worked hard all day. Why can't she play now? I don't have a good answer. I made a list of 20 ways homework hurts our kids. Homework can be stressful. It creates a negative attitude towards school, makes kids feel helpless, like a failure, frustrated, kills a love of reading, reduces developmentally appropriate play, like imaginative play, reduces time spent with family, and most importantly, contributes to obesity. So if no research has ever found a benefit to assigning homework in elementary school and it's harming children mentally and physically, putting families in a no-win situation, why are we still doing it? In 2014, Hamilton Elementary in Chicago piloted a no-homework policy. The program was so successful that an additional 15 public schools in Chicago have implemented no-homework policies. Schools across the nation are successfully adopting no homework.
30 seconds remaining.
Please update your homework policy as soon as possible to no homework for elementary students. There are children tonight who are suffering from your homework policy. You have the ability to positively impact their lives and change their outlook on learning. Thank you for your time.
Sue Mader, her more policy.
Gentlemen, my name is Sue Mader. My address is 1129 Driver Point Court, Suffolk, Virginia. I really don't have too much more to add. I think Ms. Sturgeon covered everything I need. I do have a binder with everything that I have in, but I think I just really now, after Ms. Sturgeon's, want to talk about a day in the children's lives. In the morning, they get to the school bus. They're usually there at 8:15 in the morning. School doesn't start till 9:25. Their time to get home, school finishes at 3:35. By the time they get home, it is 4:15, maybe 4:30. Now we need after-school activities because they only have 15 minutes recess. They state now we should do 60 minutes per day for our children for exercise. So now it's 4:15. They come home, they drop their stuff off. They're lucky they can grab a snack to get in the car and go to their next activity, which is usually soccer, baseball, flag football, anything like that. So now they have to be there 15 minutes prior. They get there, they change.
Can you speak in the speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Directing the speaker, thank you.
I'm having a hard time with my voice right now. So basically, it's now 5:15. They play their game. Their game is only usually an hour, hour and a half. So by the time they finish their game, by the time they get their clothes back on and get home, it's round about 7:30. Now mom has to make dinner. By the time we make dinner, by the time we've ate dinner, your child is taking a shower. By the time all that is done, it's round about 8:30 in the evening. Now they may have homework, which could take up to an hour and a half. This is so difficult. They are mentally and physically exhausted at this point. I think it's seriously unfair on elementary school, although I understand that you do need to have homework, but maybe just in the older schools, in the middle schools, in the high schools, where they need that, where they've experienced having a lot of activities beforehand, they get off school earlier. So I do believe in my heart of heart that we should really not put so much pressure on these children. These children now are suffering from stress, anxiety, depression at a young age. They're getting to a point where they don't even like to go to school because it's so much pressure on these children. I please and I beg you that we need to think about this and just do what they say on the national average, 10 minutes per grade. First grader, 10 minutes. Second grader, 20 minutes. Third grader, 30 minutes of homework. That would be more beneficial for the parents and for the children. I please ask you, really think about this. This is our children that we need to be successful, so we need them not to be suffering from anxiety and stress. Thank you.
Good reports by the superintendent. Sorry.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. The first thing on the item is the good news report. I'm going to call to the podium Mrs. Beth Ann Bradshaw, our public information officer. Ms. Bradshaw.
Evening. Each month, we take this opportunity to share with you and our viewing audience at home some of the great and wonderful things that are happening in our schools and classrooms each and every day and some of the outstanding accomplishments of both our students and our staff. Tonight, we will highlight a Nansman River High School senior who has been named a 2017-18 Leadership Ambassador for the National Beta Club, one of only 10 ambassadors selected nationwide. I'd like to call forward the school's beta sponsors, Amy Blythe and Jenna Silvio, to introduce tonight's star student.
Good evening. I'm Amy Blythe and this is Jenna Silvio, and we're the sponsors of the Nansman River High School Beta Club. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the Beta Club, it is a national scholastic and service-based organization. This year, we are very excited that one of our own is not only the Virginia Beta Club Vice President for the state, but he has been selected to serve as a National Beta Ambassador. Tonight, we would like to introduce the Nansman River Senior, Brandon Ely. Brandon is very energetic and a passionate young man. He's serving as the school's drum major. He's a part of Project Lead the Way, and he's very involved in the community through his church. At this time, it is our pleasure to introduce Brandon Ely.
First off, I just want to say what an honor it is to be here. Secondly, what an honor it is to be the Virginia State Vice President. That in and of itself was an honor. It was an election process. I had to compete against other very qualified students, some who were, I believe, highly qualified, more qualified than myself, being in Beta for such a long time. But it was with the support of my sponsors, Mrs. Blythe and Miss Silvio, that I was able to get through that challenge of just becoming a state vice president. Once I was elected state vice president, over the summer, they held a leadership conference where they had other state officers attend in Washington, DC for a week. We learned about different leadership techniques that helped me in my leadership positions, such as being drum major, that I carried back to the school. And there were about 96 students there, and out of those 96, they chose 10 students to be the National Leadership Ambassadors. Thankfully, I was blessed to be one of those Leadership Ambassadors. My first role as being a Leadership Ambassador was at an Infuse Conference, which was basically a conference with teachers, sponsors, the National Board, and national sponsors of the Beta Club in Atlanta, Georgia. What we did there, it was a seminar, teaching teachers about Beta and what it is and how they can inspire leadership in their schools. What the National Board had us do was explain to them how we benefited from the Leadership Conference, and I can truly say that I did, being around other individuals my age that were so inspired to be a part of an organization that had leadership as a pillar in their organization. And then, once we were there, we also talked to the National Board, who handles all the money behind funding the Leadership Conference, and we got to explain to them why it was such an important thing to us. Also, as being a National Leadership Ambassador, I'm encouraged to go to other state conventions to encourage other kids about Beta and how it can impact their school. Thank you.
Congratulations, Brandon, and thank you so much for representing Suffolk Public Schools so well. And to the two teacher sponsors, Miss Silvio and Mrs. Blythe, thank you for sponsoring that club. Next on the agenda, you'll see our introduction of school administration office and school administrators. Ms. Beth Ann Bradshaw, again, please. Tongue-tied.
I'm standing in for Dr. Suzanne Rice, whose own department is being introduced tonight, but she is not available. We had some introductions last month, and we'll have some more again next month. But tonight, we have several of our departments represented. Besides Dr. Rice, our Student Services Department, and if these people would stand until the rest of the department or school is named, includes Randolph Boone, a coordinator, Corey Hamlin, Supervisor of Alternative Education, and Sarah Williford, Supervisor of Health Services. Our Special Education Department at the division level includes Diane Glover, Director of Special Ed, and Diane Rusneck, Julie Masters, and Latoya Floyd, all supervisors of the Special Ed. Our Director of Technology, John Littlefield. Transportation, we have our Director, Kiva Baldwin, and our Supervisors, James Blow and Beverly Young. Our Print Services Supervisor is Freda Robertson. Forest Glen Middle School, we have Principal Melvin Bradshaw and Assistant Principal Gwendolyn Williams. John Yates Middle School, Principal Sean Green, Assistant Principals Wendy Van Huzen, Marian Lominy Gill, and Antoine London. Kings Fork Middle School, Principal Jennifer Presson, Assistant Principals Roosevelt Brown, Joyland Dildy, and Steve Smith. Driver Elementary School, Principal Melody Griffin, and Assistant Principal Cheryl Riddick. Last but not least, Nansman Parkway Elementary, Principal Chanel Woods, and Assistant Principal Jennifer Connor.
Thank you, and thanks to each of you all who were introduced today. I appreciate the work that you do on a regular basis. We have one more introduction next month. We'll finish up with additional administrators as well as school personnel. And next on the list, we have our homework policy discussion. Mrs. Pam Connor will present that, our Director of Elementary Leadership. Ms. Connor.
Good evening. Stevie, evening. I'm here to discuss our homework policy and share with you our our homework policy, a comparison of how Suffolk looks across the other divisions and our next steps. The Suffolk School Board policy, the basic objective to homework is, of course, to reinforce for the reinforcement and application of previously learned skills and concepts. Homework should be an extension of the day, providing opportunities for students to do independent studies, independent practice. It also provides communication and a link between the school and the home. One measure of program, of course, one measure, of course, is to make sure the homework is meaningful and done by the student. Homework should be an important tool in developing independent thought, self-direction, and self-discipline. These key components outline items from our policy. They should be assigned after an introduction and thorough explanation of the skills. Students shouldn't be coming home confused or not knowing exactly how to complete an assignment. Assignments should be clearly understood by the student. It's a valid purpose for the activities that were created that day in class. They should have access to materials. Teachers should be making sure that students have access to what's needed at home to complete projects and homework. Homework should be evaluated promptly, and feedback should be given to students immediately so they can correct materials or move forward. Teachers should seek to determine the causes of students are failing to do homework. What is the reason for that? Is it too difficult for the child? Is it too much work for the child? Or is there other things happening at home that is keeping them from being able to complete the assignment? Here is bold, excessive homework should be avoided. It's not the purpose to punish, only to give an opportunity for students to practice. It should not be done as a disciplinary purpose. We don't want students to not like writing and doing homework as a result of behavior. And the appropriate steps should be taken to communicate with parents regarding the division's homework policy and to solicit parent support with homework. It should be a joint venture. The following slides you'll see is the local division's nightly homework practices and how we compare to schools across our region. As you can see, we've broken ourselves into a K-12 pillar here. Kindergarten in our division is up to 30 minutes. We would never recommend that a student do a certain amount of homework. We do give the maximum amount they should be spending at night on homework. And here, I would say as a parent, if your child is working beyond this time, this is a time when you talk to the child's teacher and let them know, we're up to 45 minutes. It's taken me an hour, so that we can assess specifically what's happening with the child at home, making sure that we're not giving excessive assignments. But you'll see here, Suffolk is in the first column. We have kindergarten through 5th grade. And as Chesapeake, you'll see the following. Hampton's policy is a 10-minute rule, and they do this in grades K through 8, where they basically multiply the 10 minutes by the grade. So if I'm a second grader, I'm going to be working 20 minutes on my homework that evening. Third grade's 30 minutes. Norfolk is less than, and you'll see those numbers. Newport News and Virginia Beach. In the middle school, the local division nightly homework practices are listed below. Suffolk is 20 minutes per class. Chesapeake, you'll see the range of 20 to 30 minutes per class. Again, Hampton keeps the 10-minute rule. Norfolk is outlined. Newport News, Portsmouth, and Virginia Beach. This information outlines the high school practices. Suffolk, 20 minutes per class. Chesapeake, you'll see a range of 30 to 45 minutes per class. Hampton, 30 minutes. Norfolk, Newport News, Portsmouth, and Virginia Beach. That's a cross-section in comparison of how we are implementing our homework in comparison to our division. The research here we're sharing this evening is John Hattie's work, who is the author of Visible Learning. And he did 800-minute analysis relating to the achievement of students, and he's broken his research into the following components. The effects of homework are twice as large for high school or middle school students and twice as large, again, for middle school as elementary students, and that's a Cooper study of 1989. The effects, as you can see, high school students have a significant difference in the impact of homework with .64 compared to the elementary students of .15. Homework involving higher-level thinking and project-based work were least effective. In his research, that's not to suggest that we are not encouraging high-level thinking, but for homework, it should be something that's practiced, and students should feel comfortable doing that homework. It shouldn't be new and so challenging that it becomes overwhelming to them. And of course, high school students work more independently on homework than an elementary child would. Effects were higher when homework involved rote learning, practice, or rehearsal of the subject matter, which is not what we hear in a classroom, is what we're looking for in homework, where they're practicing, just like you're reading a book, you're going to go home and read more. You're going to practice and do materials that you're comfortable with. Short, frequent homework closely monitored by the teacher is most effective. That feedback to a child is critical to the success. Effects were greater for lower-ability students. Effects were higher in math and lowest in science and social studies. And again, this is John Hattie's work. So here we are with the what's next steps. Homework is beneficial when implemented in a manner that's aligned with research and best practices, and that's where we're moving towards here. To ensure homework is effective, we're asking principals to review the homework practices in their schools. We've met with principals already, and we meet with them again next week, and we'll be working directly with building principals to make sure they're communicating with teachers and families on our homework policies and that communication if there are problems or concerns. We're going to ensure that homework practices are aligned with our division's homework policies and practices, which references you back to the previous information of implementing our homework policy. If improvement is needed, we're going to provide reminders, training, and support to ensure assigned homework is aligned with best practices. We'll be having instructional supervisors support in steering, citywide, and CNI across the portal, giving that information to those needed. And to include homework satisfaction questions in our annual parent survey that we do each year, so we get the feedback from the parents. Includes that information. Are there any questions?
I have some questions.
Sure.
First of all, the way we give homework is not consistent across the, I mean, across the division because, first of all, I will state, I said this last meeting, I think it should be totally abolished in elementary school, totally abolished, because there are even things here that we say that in our policy, it says that they should be evaluated promptly. Well, for example, my granddaughter is in the 3rd grade, and her teacher gives homework in a packet that, you know, you would think this is a good thing because it says, well, you can do it any day that is possible for you. Of course, that's great because that allows for going to ball games and whatnot. However, there's no way to evaluate that homework promptly if you can do it. However, there's no way to evaluate that homework promptly if you can do it anytime you want during the week. So that throws that out. I highly support homework for math, that I believe there should be math problems done every day. It would even be better if they were done at school at the end of the day rather than at home. One other reason that I think that it should be totally abolished, it says here, effects were greater for lower ability students. Well, I think there's a correlation between lower ability and economic, the economic situation in the family, because we don't really know whether this child is lower ability or doesn't have these parents at home that can monitor this. And if you don't have somebody that can monitor it, then it defeats the entire purpose of practicing the things that you're talking about. I could go on and on and on and on. As you well know, I'm totally opposed to any homework in elementary school. But I do think the least that we can do in our school system is at least set up a pilot program in one of our schools and abolish homework in one of our elementary schools and then, you know, compare that school to the others at the end of the year. And also, this thing about sending out, you know, forms for parent satisfaction, I think the time to do that is today. Send that out now, because I would like to hear what the parents say about their child doing homework in elementary school. I'm only talking about elementary school, and it just seems that this third grade, up to 90 minutes of homework, that's incredible. And there are schools that actually give 90 minutes of homework. So anyway, that's all I have to say for now.
After last month's meeting, I took it upon myself to do a little research, too. And I found that National Education Association, the National Parent Teacher Association, the National Association of Elementary School Principals, and the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development all encourage schools to look at the 10-minute per-grade level that is, we have seen in the chart. And I know our speakers tonight talked about, you know, no homework policy. And I also looked at a number of schools that had those policies. But I think that reading is one thing that we should include in our homework policies. Not in addition to homework, because I've heard from parents that in addition to the 90-minute of homework, then there's also an amount of reading that has to be in the reading log. So I would hope that we would be able to take a look at that. And I agree with Ms. Bouchard. I think the time to do that is now, so that our kids can have time to play, and our elementary kids, and have time for dinner with their family so that they can enjoy and share their day with their parents.
Yes, same as Mr. Mitnick. I did a little research on homework, and I felt this was a good one. It's done in Florida. And what it says that how much homework is appropriate for students in question, that sparks national debate over the years, and we've talked about it a number of times about giving a lot of homework. But one school system in Florida has come up with its own answer, less homework and more reading. So starting this fall, they are going to ask the parent to read to the child for 10 or 20 minutes and no homework. And I thought that was a great idea for those students in the elementary school level, because I've said many a times, and I've had, I have kids, had kids, sometimes the parents do the homework, just to get the child to get to bed on time or get the bath and all of that. The next day when they go to school and you ask them when they come back, what did the teacher say about your homework? Oh, she put it on the desk. And I don't know if that's counted in the grades or not. I didn't look at that at the time. But I just think that we need to look at our policy, revise it, and look at the elementary level of how much homework. I have something that will suffice for homework that's still in the learning process.
Okay. I agree with what you said about reading. I shouldn't have left that out. I think that's really, really important. And once again, the research has shown that math practice is really important, whether it be done at home. I think it'd be better to be doing at school, but that is another subject that does need practice.
And I think it's important that we hear from our teachers as well. All elementary teachers should be able to give us their opinion on what we should be doing. We've heard from some parents, but I think it's important that we poll the parents and see how they feel about it. And like Ms. Bouchard said, I think some schools have their own policy that they are following, and others, you know, they've sort of tweaked it a little bit, and maybe we need to look at that and see exactly what could be done. But excessive homework, I don't believe it serves a purpose. The reading, emphasis on reading and math, I think are essential.
I'd like to say that I have mixed feelings about it. I've always believed that homework should be an extension of the school day. I think the NAA recommendation, I agree that that's the better recommendation with regard to homework. I do believe with children, practice is necessary, and it cannot all be done all during the school day, even though we'd like that. There are so many other things that go on during the school day. I think the child can have some time to bond. As a parent and a grandparent and an aunt who took on children, having raised six who were not my own, I've had homework recently to do. And what I've found is that I can do it, it can be longer, it can be short. The extension of 90 minutes depends on the child and how focused they are. My caveat was, you go out to play after your homework is done. And it was amazing how quickly it could be done. So I'm thinking that there are some factors to consider. I don't know where the, I'm looking at two charts, but my feeling about it is that if it's necessary for reading, and of course, we had to do reading, and it didn't help, it didn't hurt my children. They love to read. It gave us a time to spend together because I had to listen to the reading. And oftentimes, I listened to reading while I was making dinner. But there are many ways to accomplish this, and I think throwing the baby out with the bathwater is a concern for me, especially if we look at, we on one hand talk about scores, and on the other hand, we talk about test scores, and on the other hand, we talk about other things. So I think that there has to be some balance. And so I'd have a major concern about throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I also have a major concern about 90 minutes of homework for an elementary child. But again, it depends on the child, on the homework, on the structure, on the situation. All of that depends on how long you stay with the homework. If a teacher is assigning homework and not doing it, the second part of what I want to say is that homework needs to be corrected the next day. I agree with you, Mrs. Bouchard, that there is no way that homework, if it's done wrong for four days before the teacher corrects it, the child, you're really damaging yourself or taking yourself backwards. So I think we need to follow through with when homework is corrected. It can be done at the first 10 minutes of class, when I was teaching this, when I did it, just to review the problems and make sure the children got it right before we moved on to the next thing. So I think all of those things are things that we can look into, but just to blanketly say, we don't need any drill and practice at home, I have a concern about that.
I think, if I may, I think you all have given us a good amount of information for us to be able to come back perhaps next month with a recommendation. You know, when I look at that chart, if we could get to the chart, that is a lot. And I think what has happened over the years is the misconception of up to 90 minutes means that that third grader should have 90 minutes. At no point was it intended to say it must be 90 minutes each day. I do think that's a bit much. The other thing that we have to consider, that we are having to consider, as we've had discussions, staff and I, is that our students are getting out a lot later, so that's impacting what they can do after school. If it's 90 minutes after getting home, or once you get home at 4:45 or so, or 5 o'clock, then that does have, that does have quite an impact. But I do feel like, based on some of the recommendations and based on what the research suggests, the book that Mrs. Connor referenced, Visible Learning by John Hattie, is something that many of our teachers and many of our principals have been trained in. And when you see a meta-analysis that suggests that it's having very little impact, then we need not stress it to the point, to the degree that we have in years past. And so I think that come November, we can have a solid recommendation, perhaps two recommendations or alternatives for you to take a look at and consider.
Dr. Whitney?
Yes.
And Ms. Connors, and one of the things that you said, you quoted the date of the research as 1989.
That was just the piece of the middle, when they refer to the junior high and middle school, they were comparing the effects of homework is twice as large for high school than middle school. Basically, it supported John Hattie's research. The high school is where the biggest bang for the buck you get for homework. They're independent learners, they have a little more autonomy over their assignments, and that was just, this still falls under Hattie's research.
That was one of, out of the many pieces that he looked at.
Right. And, okay, I accept, that was so long ago that that's when I actually had children in middle school. Now I have grandchildren, so.
Shows a pattern of time that it's still been the same way.
Okay, okay. Well, yeah, then I misunderstood that, but that's fine.
And his current research is the .64 for high school and .15 for elementary. It was making that bridge that that has been a pattern over the years.
One other thing I just wanted to bring back up again is that one thing that I think we should also, in our research, find out is how many parents are there at home? Because, you know, we heard from two very, very involved parents, and I'm concerned about kids that don't have that advantage, and the only way they're going to get any practice work done is going to be at school. So, you know, I don't know the answer to that question, but I think it's an important question considering the students that we teach in this city to consider.
And I think when you look at the current policy, not speaking of the time limits, the current policy stresses it should be what students are able to do on his or her own. And I, having had a student who's gone through Suffolk Public Schools, can also say, there's been times that I'm thinking, were you in class? You know, because she didn't appear to, I hope she's not watching this, but, and she's home, she's home now, actually. But the reality of it is, it should be practice. Just as she was a gymnast, she practiced gymnastics on her own. She practiced soccer or whatever it was. Practice is necessary. The degree of practice is what we have to look at and be cognizant of as far as making sure that it's reasonable.
The studies are a meta-analysis, which makes me feel much better because they looked at, it's an analysis of studies, not just one author's work, and it's actually 2009.
That's when he compiled them all, right.
The day when he compiled them. I'm just thinking that, again, with, with reading to the children, it's one of those things that has helped my children take an interest in reading, listening to them read, and reading books with them. I take a page, they take a page. But if homework is an extension of the school day, it doesn't matter whether somebody's home with them or not, if it's something they know how to do. A couple of the children, my own and the ones that I helped to raise, would do their homework on the bus or while they were waiting for the bus, and they were done, all I had to do was check it by the time they got home. Some of them were not that way. So I said, it just depends on the time. But I'm in agreement that it should not be a ridiculous level of homework for young children. It just doesn't make any sense to me at all that little ones have homework that they have to do other than that kind of thing, reading to them or listening to them read, because it does take practice for fluency and to increase their vocabulary.
Very confident we can come back with a recommendation in November for you to take a look at and decide from there. Next on the agenda, you can see our community service update. During our last meeting, I think that you said you'd like to have an update at each board meeting or every other board meeting, I'm not sure, but we do have one prepared for this month. Dr. Byrd, the Director of Secondary Education, will be sharing that with us. Dr. Byrd?
Thank you, Dr. Whitney, and greetings, Chairman Nebraska and members of the board, Dr. Whitney. As stated, this is a, some of the information that I will share today is a repeat of things that you've heard before our viewing audience. I do want to go over a couple of the purpose of the community service hour requirement, and that is to promote civic responsibility through active participation in service experiences, to enhance students' ability and desire to impact the community in a positive manner, to foster a sense of caring for others, and to develop a habit of volunteering service to those in need. Our guidelines are that students will earn 50 community service hours by April of their senior year. The activities must benefit school or nonprofit community organizations, and there are some exceptions that may apply. Students may submit verification information to their school counselor. All appeal requests are handled through the superintendent's office. And you can see here, this is a recommendation that we have, that by the time a student completes his ninth, his or her ninth grade year, they would have completed 16 hours. During the 10th grade year, they would have completed the 17 hours. And by 11th grade, if they did another 17 hours, they would be, have completed all 50 of their hours. So that is a recommended timeline that we have offered or shared with our students. Some of our, as you all know, last year, our students was the first year of that requirement for graduation, and some of the activities that our students participated in include, but are not limited to, assisting teachers at elementary summer program, they repaired bookshelves at a local library, set up and clean up at churches and local events, served Thanksgiving meals with local organizations, served in soup kitchens, participated in school community beautification projects, and assisted hospital staff and gift shop and other departments. So this is a new chart that I think will be easier to follow as I report back to you from time to time throughout the year. And what this shows is, previously, we were only looking at that graduating class, that senior class, but now we will be able to track 9th, 10th, and 11th graders and to see their progress. And I'll just give you a minute to glance over this with the highlight being, if we still focus on our 12th grade year, we have 25% of our seniors who have met all of the requirements already in the month of October. Just in comparison, we are, we're in October now. At the end of November last year, we were at about 21% of our seniors completing all community service hours, so a little bit better shape than we were last year.
I think it's also important to point out that I'm doubtful that the 11th and 10th graders had begun, which I'm not sure we have the data for that. So it's even more, as far as where we are, a little bit better, I think.
That is correct. We were not tracking 9th, 10th, and 11th last year, so. But like I said, from this point on, we will update this chart, so you will be able to see the growth as the year goes on.
And haven't you changed the policy to where 8th graders can begin? Or, I forgot how you decided to do that.
It can actually start as early as 6th grade, we said.
Okay.
And we'll be tracking that as well. But what we'll report on is high school, unless you'd like to see it starting in 6th.
But no, it's not that I would want to see it, it's just that you're saying that a 6th grader can do community service and it will be documented.
Actually, the first bullet on my next slide here, well, after this, okay. So these are the total hours that we've completed at this point, and I can come back to this one if you'd like, but I do want to get into improving the process. We've introduced a community service requirement in our middle schools. Students can begin earning hours as early as 6th grade. We've developed a new high school transcript that will show parents and students the number of community service hours each year as they review their transcripts. We formally remind students the community service requirement each nine weeks with report cards. In addition, during our academic and mid-year reviews, this will, is something that we will review with our high school teams. June, we talked about June incentive, this was an idea from administrators that there may be some kind of. This was an idea from administrators that there may be some kind of June incentive at the end of freshman year, sophomore and junior year, for those who have met the requirement. We'll continue soliciting feedback from building administrators, counselors, and students. Documentation requirements have been revised to include the middle school component. Here's just where parents or students can go to see different opportunities. They are located on our school division's website. As members of the community, share that they have experiences for our students. After it is vetted, it goes into this particular website. So that's a one-stop place that a student can go to see some available opportunities. The next one is an online tool that was developed for organizations to share there. So if individual organization had an opportunity, they would just go to this online site and they could fill out the information. And the other additional information that's found on the website is the community service handbook.
Dr. Whitney? Could I ask one more question? If, if a school, for example, had a, let's say if the high school decided to have a beautification project, like, I mean, you, you were commenting on how beautiful Oakland Elementary School is and that, and that the, that the custodians are, do that as, and it's really beautiful. If a class decided to do a beautification project like that and the kids participated in that project, could that be considered community service?
Absolutely, yes.
Dr. Byrd, I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
Is the guidance counselor still the point of entry for information, the, the, the data that comes in? Do they still have to add that information?
Yes, to enter into e-school, that is correct. I'm actually having been scheduled with the middle school counselors on Thursday just to show them the process, so as they're receiving these forms. Because this is new at the middle school level. But yes, currently the high school.
I would like to still emphasize my concern that overworked counselors at two high schools are still being asked to do something that could possibly be done by somebody else in the building. And, you know, I, I really hope that, that we can look at it another place other than the school counselor as, as the person who has to enter the information. My second question is about for-profit organizations. I was alarmed to find out that we had students who completed community service hours flipping a sign for Liberty Tax Service on Main Street. And to me, that's not community service and it's against what's in the handbook because it says, "For-profit organizations that promote activities that address recognized community needs through activities such as coat drives and food collections may award community service hours to involve students." So if we have a student flipping a sign on Main Street for Liberty Tax, how is that beneficial to the community?
I agree with you, Mr. Mitnick. You sharing this with me now is the first that I've heard of that.
Well, it was part of a Freedom of Information Report that was given to the Suffolk News Herald, and that's how it was called to my attention.
So what we have with the information, and, and we went through it, we can see the names of different organizations that students participated with. But as you mentioned here in the guidelines, it does say that some for-profit organizations, and it gives those things, but we did not collect that level of detail with some of those. And the other thing that I would like to point out is that there were students who used nonprofit, some nonprofit organizations. It may not have been all of their experiences.
But, but I do think that does raise a level of concern for us as well. I think when we think about this being our fir, that being our first year, students were, were trying to get those hours in, frankly. I think when we talk about who's approving those hours, once they submit them, have to look at very closely as well, and that goes back to who's going to actually do that as well. But when we looked at the, the actual activities for where it was listed, there were, there were not many students who did it for profit, all of their hours. And in some instances, they may have listed a for-profit organization, but it still could have been a volunteer-type service. For example, if it were a local retail store, that retail store may have had some type of drive, canned food drive, coke drive, or something that they led. Or say, for example, a good example we saw just this afternoon was a dance studio. This particular student came in and volunteered her time to teach students a dance routine or something of that. So I, I do feel like, again, and I said this and, and was quoted in the paper, I, I do feel very pleased with our students that obtained the number of hours. I feel like the majority of them did it for nonprofit organizations, and, and we'll just have to continue to monitor that and ensure that we stick with what we have in our guidelines.
May I ask a question? And, and I don't want to know personally what school or what person, but that would appear to me to be the counselor that approved that. That would be their responsibility to look at what they approved for the students.
I, I agree that it should have been caught.
Yeah, it should have been caught by whoever approved it and loaded it in the computer. The student didn't get to do that, and Liberty Tax Service didn't get to do that. So whoever approved that needs to be held accountable for that, or at least trained not to accept.
And some of that, frankly, going back to your concern, Mr. Mitnick, may be a matter of time, of not being able to closely monitor that sheet. And that's not pointing the finger at anyone, but it does speak to the fact that perhaps designating someone that can look at it a little closer might be worthwhile.
I have comment. I do remember last spring when we listened to the honor graduates from the different high schools. I was so impressed by many of those students who did mention what they had gained from this whole experience. So I'd like to think about the positive. And, and I think, you know, the majority, like you say, Dr. Whitney, the majority of our students that I heard from gained quite a lot. We know there are people out there that gamed the system and everything. But I do believe, in all honesty, those students that spoke to us, really, a couple of them almost brought tears to my eyes, the way they were so sincere about what they said. And I think we do need to monitor more closely, you know, and we've learned a lesson there, I think. But I think the majority of the students that I spoke with were very much impressed and even thanked us for saying that we had this in our school system. So I look at the positive.
I too think it is a positive activity, and I would support it up and down the street. But I, I just thinks that when information gets exposed in the newspaper, it's just another thing that Suffolk Public Schools gets looked at, not in a positive light.
I, I think you're right, but I think that's always a matter of how the headline is written or what's included in the article. I stand by being very proud of the students for accomplishing this in this first year. And anyone who has time, other than our staff, to look through and try and check and balance our students, I suggest they volunteer to, in our schools, or read to a child, mentor a student.
Uh, Mr. Mitnick? You worked at Nansford River High School, I mean, and several of you did, just, just an example. I know that teachers have duties at, I mean, and I know that one of the duties is to sit and monitor the whole, I mean, for example. Can you think of, I mean, is the possibility that there may be a teacher who would volunteer to do that job as a duty? Or if not, having worked there, which type of staff member could do that job? I, I agree with you about the guidance counselors are just completely overwhelmed.
I, I don't know if, if it's something that a paraprofessional could possibly do. I, I know our schools are understaffed in just about every opportunity. But particularly as it gets close to the end of the school year, I think back as a 12th grade guidance counselor, I would probably be the one just checking off that, that it came in and putting the hours in and not scanning the form. So I mean, we're at a disadvantage as students procrastinate as well. But really, I, I think that it's a task that a paraprofessional could, could be trained to do if, if that's a possibility.
We can certainly explore other options as we move along and move forward.
I would wonder, all staff members don't have access to loading things on the transcripts, do they? Those are things that counselors do do. So I'm, I'm just wondering how that would be done. While you could have somebody else monitor it, the reality for me is, unless there's a new process, that I don't know, that, that the persons who have access to the transcript and putting things on the transcript would probably be the person who would need to do that. Now, somebody else could check the activity off and make sure it's in line. But when it comes to actually adding the credits for it, I don't know who else gets to do that. Now, you were a counselor, I wasn't, I was a principal, so.
I'm not sure that the counselor is actually adding it to the transcript. They're probably acting, are they adding it, they're probably adding it to a report that can, gets downloaded onto the transcript.
Right, right. So at some point in time, they, you have to have their signature to get it approved.
We'll look at some options.
Thank you.
That's a situation where the child needs to contact the person, the counselor or whomever's taking it, because how would they, they know that it's a nonprofit or a profit organization? You know, I could say if the man, if he was doing this, like Liberty Tax, the young man probably thought he wasn't getting paid for it, so it was a community service activity. You know, so I guess something needs to be out there that tells you that there are profit organizations. If there's a lawn care business that's doing lawns, then they are making a profit. They're not, but if it's your church, there is no profit if you go out and have the janitor trim the bushes or shrubbery or whatever. So it has to be pre-done in order to keep the child from making the mistake.
Right, a lot of lessons learned, again, with it being our first year as far as getting to the seniors last year. So there are some things, as you saw in the next steps, and, and I guess sharpening the saw to ensure that we're staying true to what the intent was from the very beginning. We can certainly follow through with that and come up with some additional solutions. Thank you. Last item on the superintendent's report is the calendar of special events. And you'll see that we have Disability Awareness Month, the month of October, Principal's Appreciation Month as well. We also have National School Bus Safety Week, October 16th through the 20th, Bus Driver and Bus Aid Appreciation Day, October 18th, Suffolk Education Foundation Golf Tournament, the 20th, State of the Schools Breakfast and Learning Fair is November 14th, and College and Career Readiness Fair is November 18th as well. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'd like the board members to refer to the consent agenda and see if any items need to be moved before we take a vote on it. Take a few minutes and look at the consent agenda, please. If not, items.
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Items 1 through 25.
Second motion.
Board members will please vote. Board Member Burchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Byron?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dubrinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
If you look at unfinished business, the same thing there. There are items that can be approved at this time, if you want to vote on them now.
I move that we approve Ordinance 17/18-3 through Ordinance 17- slash 18 through 12.
Board members will please vote. Board Member Burchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Byron?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dubrinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Board members, if you refer to new items, new business, it'll be the first reading, no action will be required, but if you want to look through that at this time and have any questions about the new items on the new business. We have questions about that, that we'll go into the first reading, and we'll go to public secrets online agenda topics.
Hi, good evening. I have some handouts for you guys this evening. My name is Heather Loesch, I live at 105 White Hall Arch, Suffolk, Virginia. I am a registered nurse with my bachelor's degree, working as a school nurse for Suffolk Public Schools at Kingsworth High School. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the school nurses and the school nurse assistants regarding the 2018-19 school budget. As we begin another year with budget challenges, the school nurses of Suffolk Public Schools would like for you to recognize the extreme importance of having a registered nurse in every school. Registered nurses are qualified individuals who provide a variety of services, including but not limited to, management of chronic illnesses, the administration of medication, tube feedings, catheterizations, complex diabetes management, prevention and treatment of life-threatening allergies, and the treatment of other severe medical conditions. According to the National Association of School Nurses, School Nurse Journal, "In addition to the laws that establish rights for children with disabilities to attend school, medical advances have increased the number of students with special health needs in schools. Our goal as the school nurse is to maintain the health and safety of each student so that they can remain in the classroom, which is the key to their success, excuse me. With the increased need for qualified school nurses, they must be compensated accordingly. The only way to do this is to change and increase the salary range for school nurses in Suffolk Public Schools. The charts below reflect the current pay ranges for school nurse and school nurse assistant positions within neighboring Region 2 school divisions. Please note, at the top of the chart, that Norfolk nurses are paid on a teacher's salary, where the starting pay is $43,622 and the max is $76,687. Suffolk nurses are at the very bottom of the scale, starting at $30,382 and maxing out at $45,894. The second chart reflects the pay of school nurse assistants across the region. Sussex is at the top with a starting pay of $30,000 and a maximum of $63,000, while Suffolk, again, is at the bottom of the scale with a starting salary of $19,950 and a max of $30,352. Along with RNs, LPNs, also known as school nurse assistants, play a vital role in the day-to-day functioning of Suffolk Public Schools. LPNs assist the RNs in schools where one nurse is not enough to care for the increased number of students or the complexities of their special healthcare needs. Research published in 2015 stated, "The National Association of School Nurses recommended one school nurse for every 750 students." At the beginning of the 2017-2018 school year, Suffolk Public Schools had six vacancies for school nurses. There are still three vacancies at this time, and possibly more to come with the addition of two new schools for the 2018-19 school year. While three vacancies may not sound like a large number, these vacancies leave 16% of the 19 schools in the district without a nurse. Suffolk Public Schools cannot expect to attract, hire, and retain highly qualified nurses when the compensation is significantly lower than all neighboring school districts. Registered nurses are a necessity in today's schools, and districts across the nation, healthcare emergencies and school nurse shortages have been deemed a ticking time bomb by education world. Now more than ever, with chronic illnesses on the rise, school nurses are the key to ensuring student safety and success. Without a change in our current pay scale, it is only a matter of time before Suffolk could face a situation similar to the following example. In Tacoma, Washington, school nurses had to travel between schools due to budget constraints. In the case of 10-year-old Mercedes Mears, having a school nurse on site could have saved her life. Mercedes had a health plan on file, and the nurse knew about this, student's asthma and allergies, but she was not.
So I think from the school board, we thank you for presenting it the way that you did, Dr. Whitney and staff. That's it.
I'd just like to send our heartfelt sympathy out to the family of Drew Miller from Nazman River High School. He's a young man that passed away in an accident on Monday of this week. And I'd just like to recognize the loss that the Nazman River family has felt as well as his family. So our sympathy goes out to the Miller family. I would like to say, you know, I've had two phone calls this month on the same topic, and one was from a kindergarten and second-grade parent, and the other was from a parent of a high school senior who were both concerned that the dress policy discriminates against females. And when you look at the dress policy, it doesn't specifically hit you in the face that way, but when you listen to what parents are saying, like a kindergarten girl who can't wear a tank top because the shoulders are not two fingers wide, and, you know, the parent was actually called to bring another shirt to the student, we're talking about a kindergarten student that this happened to. And, you know, the high school parent was concerned that their daughter was subjected to the discrimination as a female in the dress policy. So, you know, I don't know if it's something that we need to look at. You know, I know it was last reviewed in 2012. But, you know, I am concerned when parents tell me those type of things, and then you have such a broad spectrum from kindergarten to 12th grade. So, you know, whatever needs to be done, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Are boys allowed to wear tank tops?
No.
I mean, in high school, I mean?
No.
Okay, I don't understand the discrimination for high school. The kindergarten one makes sense. They don't even make shirts that are that wide because the kids are too little. But I don't understand the high school one, what you were saying about high school. How is it discriminating?
Specifically, it had to do with shorts, the length of the shorts that the young lady was wearing.
Do the boys get to wear shorts that short?
I don't know that they want to wear them that short. I mean, I'm just being perfectly honest right here.
I just don't understand that, I don't understand the discrimination, I mean, because you're right, if boys wanted to wear them that short, there's nothing to say they can't.
But I just throw that out there. But I'd like to thank Dr. Whitney and his staff for bringing us the information this evening on the homework policy and on the community service hours. You know, and it seems like we do need to take a look at the homework policy. And with community service, I, more than anyone, sees the benefit of community service. I'm very active as a volunteer in the community myself, and, you know, I've seen the benefits of it since I was young. But if it is a graduation requirement, I think that we just need to be looking at it more carefully. And last year, I guess we could look at it as a pilot year and learn from what we did last year and move forward.
I'd like to say, as always, thank you to parents and staff and everyone else who keeps, they keep us going all during the year, and we just appreciate it. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I'd like to say I was really interested in, this is, I guess I have the mic and this is a personal thing, but I'm introducing, I was asked to introduce someone at a banquet over on the eastern shore, and when they sent me the information, it's Dr. Eldie Britt, who is a graduate of Booker T. Washington High School of Suffolk. And I thought, this is really neat. I mean, it wasn't planned, it worked out that way. But he is the lead surgeon, he's a graduate of our schools, and he is the lead surgeon at EVMS, at the Eastern Virginia Medical College. So I thought that was a real neat thing for Suffolk.
I'd like to thank the superintendent. I think he did not mention, if I'm in error, the graduation of, in June, yeah, well, yeah. Lakeland at 9 o'clock, Kings Fork 12, Nazman River 3. So I'd like to mention that fact that he seemed to have done a fine job in knowing that the reversal takes place. Because where's 3 o'clock last time? Now they're 9 o'clock. The school is now 9 o'clock this time, Lakeland is 9, and Kings Fork is 12, and Nazman River was 9, I think, last time. Now it would be 3.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up, because what happened was the school calendar had misprinted, and some parents had expressed concern. They were very much aware that we normally rotate it. And so what you see in our events calendar is the correct time, as Mr. Copeland indicated. 9 o'clock Lakeland, 12 Kings Fork, and 3 PM Nazman River.
I'd just thank the superintendent and the staff who presented for the budget to the council last week, and it was well-presented and well-accepted. Thank you for your effort there with that. Here's the personnel report.
Mr. Chair, I move that the personnel report be adopted.
Second. If board members will please vote. Board Member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Byram?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dubrinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I move that the pupil personnel reports be adopted.
Second. Board members will please vote. Board Member Bouchard?
Yes.
Board Member Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Byram?
Yes.
Board Member Mitnick?
Yes.
Board Member Skeeter?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Copeland?
Aye.
Chairman Dubrinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
No further business coming forward. I'll declare this meeting adjourned. Everybody have a safe trip home today. Thank you very much for coming.